Very good. Well, welcome everybody to the April nineteenth meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. We have a very special meeting tonight. It's particularly the beginning of it. We have many very special people with us tonight. And in fact, some who were invited that may not yet be here, but those that are here, we have a whole group of special people. So if you would please stand with me for the invocation and the pledge. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come together tonight. We ask your blessings upon our meeting and upon our community. We pray especially that you watch over and protect the people of Ukraine. Help us to conduct our business tonight with wisdom and a sincere concern for the common good of all. We ask this as one community united in the bonds of freedom. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as I mentioned, we have quite a few very special people with us tonight. And this is not in the order of importance. This is just, we have to do this one at a time. So the first thing we'd like to do, and this is perhaps a kind of covered a lot of ground in one day. But as everybody who lives in Temple Terrace knows, we have many faiths, traditions, and many cultures that live within our city, which is one of the things that makes our city an amazing place to live and to work. And so we have, first of all, a certificate of recognition for the Jewish holiday of Passover, but I don't see the rabbi here yet tonight. So we'll pass on that one, at least for now. At the same time, we have our Muslim brothers who are with us tonight in recognition of the Muslim holiday of Ramadan. And so we'd like to invite you, and I do have a certificate of recognition if you'd like to approach the podium. Good evening and welcome. And I'll just read this for everybody. It says, "In recognition of the holy month of Ramadan, which began on April the second, two thousand and twenty-two, the Muslims around the world observed the month by fasting each day from sunrise to sunset to help bring awareness to the plight of the less fortunate. The daily breaking of the fast, known as iftar," I hope I have that right, I try, "is often celebrated with community gatherings and family tidings, which is followed by evening prayer. For the followers of the Islamic faith, Ramadan, which lasts thirty days, is regarded as a time for spiritual reflection and solidarity with the less fortunate." The end of Ramadan is celebrated with the Eid al-Fitr. Say it again. Eid. El. Fit. Very good. Thank you very much. I do try, but I'm not always successful. Festival which commemorates the breaking of the fast. Eid al-Fitr is a joyous occasion marked by the sharing of sweets, gifts, and good familial tidings with family and friends. In recognition of the month of Ramadan and the Eid al-Fitr, why couldn't you say this one to three times the one I could say? Right? As well as our Muslim community and neighbors, we are very proud as mayor and city council to present this nineteenth of April, two thousand and twenty-two, a certificate of recognition for the month of Ramadan. And thank you for being here. Would you like to say a few words, sir?
Mr. Mayor of the amazing city of Temple Terrace, the respected members of the council, the attendees, and all the media audience, Assalamu alaikum. Peace be upon you. On behalf of the Muslim community in our local, we greatly thank you for inviting us for this proclamation. Today, April the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, or Ramadan the eighteenth, fourteen forty-three. The Muslims' month of Ramadan this year is the timing for both the Christian Easter and the Jewish Passover. However, it is unfortunate that these Abrahamic religions call for peace and the best of manners and the best of behavior among human and the environment. These three religions are fifty-six percent of the current population of this earth. However, there are still wars in the world. There is still so much oppression and injustice. I am inviting everyone to use their place of work, place of home, and community to think how can promote peace locally and globally. We need to please our Lord with spreading peace. All people in this world deserve to live in peace and equality. This is my message for humanity today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, we'd like to honor Mr. Ron Smith. Ron, would you like to come up? Good evening, sir. Many of you know Ron Smith. For those of you who don't, Ron has served the city for, I don't even know how many years. You were here when I got here. A long time.
I think it started in two thousand and seven.
Okay. Yeah, you've got me beat by a few years. And Ron has served in, I don't even know how many capacities, as a citizen, volunteer, and a council appointee to many, many things. Ron and I have worked together on several projects, and I can tell you that he's a tremendous asset to the city. Tonight, we are recognizing Mr. Smith for his service to the city in only one capacity, not the others. He's been up here before. And in this capacity, he has served us as the Hillsborough County Maritime Law Enforcement Citizens Advisory Committee appointee of the council since August of two thousand and fifteen, and his term is due to expire here in early in May. And I understand that you're not seeking another appointment, at least for that.
Correct.
So we'll have to find you another, another job. I'm sure we can talk. So, and I'll read this for you. It says, "In recognition of his seven years of invaluable service to the city of Temple Terrace and Hillsborough County, for his dedication as a member and most recently chairman of the Hillsborough County Maritime Law Enforcement Citizens Advisory Committee," and it's proudly awarded by myself and my colleagues on the city council. And Ron, we really appreciate all the work that you've done for us. And would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. You know, I got started with the Riverwatch Task Force when it was first created in two thousand and seven. I felt like we have really accomplished a lot with that group of people concerning the Hillsborough River as it flows through Temple Terrace. We affectionately call that the Middle River. The Upper River from Fowler North, the Lower River from the dam South. But the Middle River is Temple Terrace, for the most part. I feel like the city of Temple Terrace now has a seat at the table, if you will. We're involved with many, many organizations that we were not involved with before. We have council members on TAC, which is a technical advisory committee, on the river. We have members on the board, the River Board. We have a lot of involvement where we never had before, and I think it's the Task Force that started all that. And that was started in two thousand and seven. And then I was appointed to the Marine Agency, which has been an interesting position. There are members there from the Hillsborough County sheriffs, the Tampa Police Department, the Temple Terrace Police Department, the Coast Guard, the Fish and Wildlife Committee, and the Marine Safety Board. We meet once a quarter and discuss a variety of things. I've been fortunate enough to go on a ride along with a couple of those agencies. That has been very interesting, opened my eyes to a lot of things, especially in the South Hillsborough area where there's a lot of manatee zones and things that we don't face here in Temple Terrace, but they're still important to our overall environment. So I've been proud to be part of that organization, to work with the city of Temple Terrace for many years. I appreciate the opportunity, and now I look forward to retirement. Thank you.
You might look forward to it.
For now.
We have your number.
We know where to find you.
I know.
Our next guest is another very special guest, and I would like to call to the podium Trooper Tony Shuck. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't even know that I can give this story justice. If you will recall, back in March, there was a race across the Skyway Bridge, if you guys recall that. And during this race, a drunk driver sped through the barricades and approached the bridge and threatened to run over all of the runners on the bridge. If you can imagine the carnage that could have been caused by a hurling speeding car running over masses of runners with nowhere to even escape except over the side of the bridge. It's hard to even fathom what that would have looked like. Because of Trooper Shuck, who is with us tonight, that did not happen. And I can tell you, I've heard this story not just from the media, but I've also heard it firsthand from my friend Sergeant Steve Gaskins, who is here from the Florida Highway Patrol. And it is an amazing story. And ladies and gentlemen, I did thirty-two years in law enforcement. This trooper is my hero. So we coupled this with Alcohol Awareness Month because we thought that was an appropriate connection. And so we've invited Trooper Shuck, who I never thought in a million years would come. This trooper, ladies and gentlemen, is getting invitations from all over the United States. I mean, she's rather popular. And so I never thought in a million years that she would come here. And so I'd like to read this, but then I have a little more. So this is a proclamation from the city council, the city of Temple Terrace. It says, "Whereas April is recognized nationally as Alcohol Awareness Month, which brings attention to the danger of drinking and driving. And whereas the city of Temple Terrace recognizes the efforts of law enforcement and anti-drunk drug and drunk driving organizations that promote safety on local and state highways. And whereas in two thousand and twenty-one, more than sixty-two fatalities occurred in Hillsborough County, including one death in the city of Temple Terrace as a result of impaired driving, while more than one hundred and thirty-two fatalities occurred in the Tampa Bay region." Let that sink in, folks. One hundred and thirty-two just in Tampa Bay. Totally preventable. Whereas last month, during the Skyway ten K marathon, Florida Highway Patrol Trooper Tony Shuck protected the more than seven thousand participants from injury or death by placing her vehicle in the path of a DUI driver who failed to stop at roadblocks, resulting in a head-on collision between the two vehicles, head-on, high speed. This trooper had two minutes to think about this decision before she did it. Two minutes. This was not a split-second decision. This was amazing. Whereas, we extend due to full respect and humble gratitude to Trooper Shuck placing herself in harm's way, as well as sincere wishes for a continued recovery. And whereas, the city of Temple Terrace lauds the heroism of Florida Highway Patrol Trooper Tony Shuck for her selfless actions on March sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, as well as her twenty-six years of service to the state of Florida. And whereas, the city of Temple Terrace seeks to prevent the senseless tragedy and grief that result from drunk driving, now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim April, two thousand and twenty-two, and April in each subsequent year, Alcohol Awareness Month, in honor of Trooper Tony Shuck." Trooper, I'm sure you've spoken a lot about this, so feel free to say as much or as little as you feel comfortable.
Now that you got me all in tears after that. Thank you, the mayor, the council, and to everybody that lives in the city. I appreciate the recognition. That, the day of the incident, I'd been there all night long. You know, we prepped for that event, and I'm watching movies, and I'm thinking how, you know, how previous years have gone by and pretty much flawless. And when the call came out, what happened, what didn't, the end result isn't what went through my mind, but what went through my mind was, I knew there were people out there. And not only did I know there were people on that bridge, she could have also took the route to the rest area, and that's where the workers were staging. So ultimately, those two routes that she could have took, both were vulnerable. When the sergeant went past me, because his position was inside the rest area, when he went past me, I lagged back, and that was just my, just the feeling that I had, because I knew I was the last one. I knew there was nobody else to stop, to stop her. And I didn't predict that outcome in my mind, in that, you know, the hundred and twenty seconds that I had, that I had hoped that she was going to stop, but she didn't. But just like I've said every other time, I'm glad it was me. I'm glad that I got her stopped, and she wasn't able to hurt anybody else. So just, you know, support your law enforcement. It seems like this is a great city to live in, too, and that they do. But we're, you know, we take an oath, and I know we've had some bad publicity, but we care. We care about these people. I mean, we had seven thousand people on that bridge. None of them I knew, except for the other law enforcement officers that were working it. So, but I knew they were there, and I knew something had to be done. So it was me. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's amazing. So Trooper, we have some people here who are especially grateful that you're around. And we have some Temple Terrace residents who were on that bridge and whose lives you saved.
So that's what gets me, is when I get the letters, I get the letters from the family, and then I get the letters from the kids.
So if you, I know at least two that I invited. If there are others, if you were on the bridge that day, would you please stand? Ladies and gentlemen, those are three people out of seven thousand. Who knows how many of them would have even not been here tonight? So why don't we do this? Why don't we, let me give the trooper her proclamation. We'll get a photo of that. And then why don't we get a photo with command staff? I see Trooper's captain is here, along with the people from the bridge and the council, right? So we'll get a big one after the first one. How's that?
Thank you for honoring us by coming.
Oh, absolutely. It's hard to say no, but you have to, unfortunately.
I knew I'd get Steve.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sorry? Barbara? I don't know. She's in charge of the picture taking. I think you should be with your trooper. Okay, first we'll look at Lori's camera, then we'll look at, so that way everybody gets good pictures.
Squeeze and throw sides.
Yep, that's perfect. All right, one, two, three. I'm gonna take a couple.
Now you got us all crying now. They say you have us all crying.
I know. If we were smart, we'd conclude the meeting now. Come back tomorrow night to do the rest of the stuff. Dr. Gudere, are you going to be able to follow that? Very good. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience with that. That was obviously a very special thing to do, so thank you. Next presentation, we're not done with the excitement yet. We have a presentation. We try to do this about annually, but we have a presentation now from the American Red Cross. Mr. Eric Corlis, who is here, regional CEO, American Red Cross of Central Florida, and my friend Dr. Ken Gudere, who is the Tampa Bay Chapter Board Member, if you would like to approach. Welcome back. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update. And do you have a slide to present?
Yes.
There we go.
First off, it's a pleasure to come here. We do serve the community, not in the capacity you just saw, but we consider ourselves a community service organization, and we're here to work with you. And as you know, hurricane season is just around the corner, and it's time to prepare. So we usually try to, you know, do some visits in the spring. So just a reminder of who we are, it's all stated here. But the Red Cross, you know, we depend on the generosity of donors and the generosity of their time of volunteers. We are an organization that's ninety percent volunteer, and for every dollar donated, ninety percent or ninety cents goes to the mission. So if you've ever worked for a charity and tried to get that rating, that's extremely hard to do. Some people think we just do shelters, but shown here are some of the other lines of service that I always like to consider. And we help the armed services and their families when they're deployed. We obviously have disaster services. We do, together with OneBlood, we do blood services throughout the state. Again, we work with a partner there. We do a lot of training, CPR, nurses assistants, others. And we have an international arm, too, that goes and works overseas. We have people on the ground in Poland, around Ukraine. We have people in Ukraine. And we, our local group last time did the Bahamas when they had a hurricane. So we do, we do spread out. Here we are. This is our local chapter. We cover from Flagler County as seen all the way down into South Central Florida. And we also have the Virgin Islands. For us here locally, we have Hillsborough and Pinellas. We cover Bahamas, too.
No, just the US Virgin Islands.
No. He doesn't let me go anywhere like that anyhow, so. But that's our spectrum right there, so we cover a large area. Okay, I used up all your time.
All right. So I just wanted to bring this forward because it has been a busy two years, and not because of COVID. This slide came from Noah. And last time we presented, we talked about two thousand and twenty and the twenty-two billion dollar disasters, which was an increase over the previous teens, the previous decade, with an average in the fifteens. And what we saw in two thousand and twenty-one was a similarly busy disaster year, a little slower. But what we're seeing is the intensity, the frequency, and the impact of these disasters are substantial. So what we know is important is individual preparedness, and we're going to talk about that. But also, before I move ahead on this, is what's different? And we're seeing the economic impact. We're seeing people staying longer in shelters. So think about staying on a cot in blankets with all of us, fine people there and some other people we don't know, and being there for thirty days. That is the average stay now for people over the last two years, where prior to COVID, it was seven days. And it's food insecurity, it's affordable housing, and it's access to healthcare are the major considerations that are keeping people from being able to go home and recover from disasters. So I wanted to share that. In our connection, we work with Hillsborough County Emergency Management, but also we work with community leaders. So if, if and when there is a disaster of substance within the city, our work together to help residents recover, respond to and recover from disasters is going to be critical. So this is a part we just wanted to highlight. We do regular presentations on how to be ready, make a kit, build a plan, stay informed. Also, readyrating.org is available for businesses because we need our businesses and community-based organizations to be prepared and recover from for a holistic recovery. And then we have education targeted at children, K through six, or, yeah, K through sixth grade. My children are older than that. I have two teenagers. What they bring home makes a difference and actually compels us to act. So, and then, am I still in for this one?
Go for it.
All right. So what we launched, similar to others, is getting ready for the storm, opening up emergency evacuation centers, so where people need to flee the wind or the rain. That's a critical part in coordination with emergency management. with emergency management. But you also may have seen and recall what's been ran in the news lately is it's not a big category five that we're worried about. You look at the rain amounts and the significance of what a tropical storm could do that dumps heavy amounts of precipitation. Also what we have is our volunteer workforce will bring people in, but we really look at the plan and the strategy of how do we provide people a safe space and get to those that cannot return. And we saw that with Irma where there was hundreds of thousands of people in shelters and it dropped down to around 40, 50,000 across the state. And they stayed, the last shelter closed nearly 60 days after Irma passed and had not affected the area because people had a difficult time returning into areas and particularly where housing was heavily impacted. And it required a multi-agency, inter-agency response to be able to place some of these folks that were very, they're very much living on the edge prior to Irma affecting the state of Florida. After the storm, we worked together to look at cleanup supplies, distribution of, of emergency supplies. And what I described earlier, the impact is we need to know, we know that not all residents are starting at the same position. So getting to the most vulnerable, the soonest, who are disproportionately affected by disasters is something that's important and it's, it's really needed. And we're seeing people in areas that are, that are hidden. It's not where you'd expect it as people are struggling with the financial impacts of the changes that are occurring within our communities. So, and then recovery, we're seeing different things that we're, we're doing as we have funds. We've worked with community-based organizations to help fund mental health programs. We have different partnerships that we put in place, including grants that goes directly to people with major and destroyed homes. But in that building and rebuilding of lives is even significantly harder than we've ever seen over the last two years. And it's beyond COVID. It's the reality of what we're seeing in our community as costs rise of just living. Use fuel as an example and all the associated costs. It's just more expensive for our families that are living on the edge. So with that, I turn over to Dr. Gudere.
Thank you. You were briefed for once. Wow.
Hazardous duty.
Yeah. We have a lot of resources. Um, I'm just going to run through a couple of them, but if you go on our website, uh, on our Facebook, Twitter, you can get access to these. And like this one here shows weather alerts, safety info and where to get a shelter. And by the way, I heard from a hurricane expert who said, our group asked him what, you know, what do you think about? And he goes, you need to hide from wind and run from water. I thought about that, you know, if water's coming, you, you're not going to do well. We're probably okay here, but we might get a lot of wind, so. And the other thing he brought up is people think they can stay and they might be in a condo in Pinellas County and they can stay and they're going to make it. And he said, but there's no services after that. You know, their parking lots flooded, no one can get in, their refrigerator's off and see, and, you know, we have to think of the whole picture. So we also have a lot of communication. We have, um, visits like this, we have community liaisons and we have people that work in disaster cycles that, cycle service that work with the community leaders. So hopefully we have someone working with, uh, this city. And as the season approaches and as we think of all of our arms of service, we always need volunteers. Uh, I myself is one. I started with Katrina, but we need, we always need help with the action team, disaster action, recovery afterwards, mask care, you know, when you've got a shelter running 60 days, you need a lot of help. And we have a disaster duty officer that coordinates efforts with, uh, local organizations. Again, here's some of our apps. We also have presentations, uh, twice a month as shown here, but if you download the apps, uh, you could enlarge that on the right later, but we have, uh, apps for multiple services that will help the individual or, or the community. So we wish to thank you once again. We enjoy being partners with you and, uh, here's our contact info. And, um, thank you for your time and patience. We beat the clock.
Thank you, Mr. Corliss. Thank you, Dr. Gudere. Council member question, any questions for either?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. We're always pleased to see you and, and, uh, hopefully about this time next year, we'll...
Right. And I have your annual pin here.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you. Take care, Ken.
May you have a boring year.
Yes. Thank you both for coming. Thank you, Eric. So our next item of business is a presentation on Florida ROI, uh, Real Estate Broker Services. And Business Relations Manager Greg Polly will introduce the, um, item to us. So counsel, I, I would like to ask your indulgence on something. Originally, the, um, agenda was set up to have this presentation and then later at the end of the meeting, we'd bring this up for discussion and council decision on what to do. With your indulgence, I'd like to just knock this out and if we have this going on, let's, I'd like to just have the discussion while everybody's here, not make them sit around and wait an hour and, and if that's okay with you. Okay? Great. All yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, good evening, members, Mr. Mayor. Uh, before I bring up the presenter this evening, I'd like to spend just a moment and give you a quick background on the process we went through. This process follows, uh, an agreement with a previous brokerage. In 2017, the city entered into an agreement with Cushman and Wakefield Brokerage to provide real estate broker services to oversee the sale of city-owned properties in the Temple Terrace redevelopment area. The term of that agreement was subsequently extended on two occasions and ultimately expiring on the 28th of February of this year. Following the expiration of the city's agreement with Cushman and Wakefield, staff published RFQ 22003, soliciting qualifications for brokers seeking to represent the city. The RFQ was published on March 9th, 2022 and resulted in responses from two firms, Florida ROI and CBRE. The responses were evaluated by a three-person committee, including Dr. Spina, Mr. David Pagorlich and myself. The committee found that both respondents were qualified and capable of meeting the city's requirements and needs. The respondents were then subsequently invited to deliver a presentation before this council here at tonight's meeting. Mr. Eric Odom, managing broker for the Florida ROI Commercial Property Brokerage, responded to my invitation and is here tonight to deliver a presentation on his services and how his services can benefit our city. The second respondent, Mr. Jason Sasser of CBRE, did not respond to my invitation. After repeated attempts to contact Mr. Sasser, um, his managing director did contact me and withdraw from the process citing, uh, staffing changes in their office. They could, they would not be able to satisfy our requirements. So that is the background on tonight's presentation. And at this time, I would like to call to the podium, uh, Mr. Eric Odom of Florida ROI. Eric and team.
I was going to welcome Mr. Odom, but I'm not sure who that, there's more than one here. Welcome to all of you.
Thank you. Feel like it's a TV show where you pull off the mask. I am Eric Odom. I am Eric Odom and I do appreciate the time that you're allotting us tonight, council members, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Going to, uh, do we have a presentation that we could put up on the screen here? Make sure this is, uh, this is on. Right? Okay, terrific. So I think these are the parcels right now that are in question that we're going to be, uh, marketing and, uh, I'm just going to use this as a placeholder because I really want to just spend this time to talk to you a little bit about, about us and more importantly, you and what can we do and what can you do to help us market you and your city better? We are, uh, in terms of the individuals, myself, this is Deb Tamargo and Colonel Robert Worthman. Unfortunately, Mark Ogles, who is our government liaison, is not going to be with us tonight. Uh, he is, uh, his father has some, some health issues that he's taking care of in, in Georgia. But, um, but that's the team. Part of what we do at Florida ROI in terms of who we hire, we want collaborative, uh, team approaches because each one of us brings a unique experience. Uh, we've got a really dedicated, a dedicated team. Uh, first and foremost, we're a registered small business enterprise, although we do have relationships with other government entities, uh, Manatee County in the, in the past and the Hillsborough County Schools as well. Local owned since 2008. We're also a member of national network TCN Worldwide, which we have 200 and something offices around the world, which allows us to have that worldwide reach that is unusual for a firm of our size. Being in Temple Terrace, you guys are important to us. We're a local firm and we want to see, we get energized by activities that help our community look good and live it, make it more, uh, livable and workable. One of the things we saw, we started doing research is that you guys have, have hired and been dedicated to walkability and trying to increase the quality of life in your community. And that's, that really jazzed us. And so that was one of the things that stood out and said, we really want to, we want a part of this too, because this is something that we believe in as, as well. Uh, we recruit members that want to participate a, as a team. Uh, and I think that it's probably best, uh, to introduce some of the team now because, you know, I, I think we've got, we've got a great group with us. On my left here is, uh, Deb Tamargo. Some of you might already know Deb. She's understated, I think, uh, and if, if some of you would know her and if, and she's a pioneer for women in commercial real estate in this community. She really was a dominant force in community real estate for over, over 30 years. And she knows, uh, land development inside and out, and I'm really proud to have her as a member of the team. And Deb, you want to say a few words about your relationship with USF and Temple Terrace?
Well, when Eric first talked to me about the possibility of doing this, I was very excited and I urged him, yes, let's do it. I love Temple Terrace and not just because I'm a USF grad and I've stayed connected, as Barbara can tell you, for God knows how many years and, um, and Moffett Hospital and your own public service system also that I worked alongside of and many of the health issues, the healthy community issues that I worked with. But more so, I was excited because I know the people of Temple Terrace. And what I saw here tonight shows two of our team members exactly why. And that is because you care about your community, you show you care about your community, people participate together and that makes us do a better job for you. Yes, we have the talent, we have the expertise, we have the relationships with the right developers, but more so, we want to exercise the same integrity and caring for this community that you do.
Thank you, Deborah. And then on my right, uh, we have Colonel Robert Worthman. He's a West Point grad and has more than 36 years in the US Army. He came to us recently and, and, and he is going to be our boots on the ground as part of the team. He's going to be doing a, a lot of the heavy lifting and we're really happy to have the Colonel. He's had eight, over eight years in, in real estate experience. And so Colonel, if you'd say a few things about the community?
And they tossed me out of the army. I had to go to real estate, so. But anyway, thank you, Eric, and, um, wonderful to meet you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Appreciate the opportunity you've given us to serve the citizens of this amazing city. Uh, just a few, um, stats, which makes you a very accomplished city, is that you are, you have about 75% or greater population has been educated past high school. You've got 50%, 52% homeowners. You have a highly developed workforce, um, that earns approximately, you know, median ma, uh, about 63,000 per household. And then you have a robust millennial and veteran population. Uh, you also have an excellent, um, school districts. Um, you have very stable neighborhoods. Um, you're, um, you have a very, uh, what should I say? As we saw tonight, accessible and responsive, uh, local government. So based on these strong demographics, um, we're very excited, uh, to bring very, to trustworthy, um, developers to this project. And our vision at Florida ROI is really the same as your city. Simple, precise, serving the community with excellence. So, uh, we really are grateful to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. So now a little bit about you and what, I hope that we might have a, a few moments of afterwards to, to interact a little bit, that you can tell us a little bit about what you believe it, you'd like to see and would you like to do with those parcels? Because I do believe that that's going to be important to the success, that we understand what your needs are. Everybody's on the same page here. We want success just as you do and you want your community to be, uh, to be a showcase in that area, to be a showcase, uh, for, uh, for the, for the city. So time is, is, is very important in real estate. And we want to make sure that we're moving expeditiously and that we're breaking down any of the barriers that might be in place for us to be able to execute your vision for the city. And so it, what, what we want to make sure is that when we're putting data out, we're putting the listings out, that we're also providing all the information possible for developers to be able to make a decision expeditiously and that we can, we can move on. What happens over time, uh, as, as things are listed, you start having some, allow some confidence with the developer community that the deal can actually get done. So I would like to, you know, get a little bit of better idea from you folks in terms of your timeframe and, and how, what sort of standards you might have set up to make sure that, that items that are brought to the council are, are, are acted on. We understand, uh, you know, that there's, there's a process here, but we, but we do want to try to convey to potential developers, uh, what that process is going to look like. One thing that we're unaware of, because this is your profession, not ours, is incentives. I don't know if there's any incentives that are available, but we would like to be able to explore those opportunities, whether it be tax holidays or other, uh, items that might stimulate a developer to want it, be the straw to the bird, the camel's back to want to, make them want to come over and do the project that you want to do. Architectural requirements, I know that what you guys have developed in the parcel there is terrific and we want to make sure that we're in line with that. So it's trying to get those, those elements of the architectural to, uh, to our, to our potential clients and prospects that would, that would, that would be buyers and developers. And so we want to make sure that we've got all that information as, as well. And finally, we, we talked, I understand that you guys have just hired a firm to discuss walkability. We want to understand and have access if you have any engineering reports and data for us on each one of the parcels, whether it be, uh, geotechnical or, uh, I know whether the residential property, what are the allowable uses in, in terms of how many residential properties can we build on, on that? And there might be some other ideas that you've explored outside of just residential to be able to, uh, use highest and best for that, for that parcel. So if you have any engineering reports that have been done on that, that would be greatly appreciated if you could, if you could share that with us. Well, in summary, you know, we're excited that we've, uh, about this assignment. And if we're awarded, uh, we would like to address the handful of items that we have brought up that, to help us help you to create your vision. And at this point, I've, I, you know, in the, in the shortest amount of time possible, this time, I, I think that's the end of our presentation. If the Colonel or Deb has something to add and, and if you'd like to have interaction, I'd, I'd welcome that too.
We do, uh, Mr. Odom. Prior to the council member questions and discussion, however, it's pretty customary, if it's an action, if it's an item that we're poised to take action on, that we allow public comment first.
Sure.
So we'll open it up briefly for public comment and then we would, um, I'm sure have some questions and discussion for you. So are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? And what typically happens is as soon as you get comfortably seated, nobody comes up. All right, once more, are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Council member questions? I, I do have a few. I'm sure you folks probably do too, so. I know, as soon as you get seated, it's always... Council members? Questions? No questions?
Why don't you go?
Go ahead. Okay. So we've had a couple of, I mean, I've got my theories, but I want to hear yours. I, I know mine and I'm not a real estate broker. So what do you think our city could do differently than we've been doing the past couple of years to get this property developed?
Now Deb, you want to try to address that?
I think one of them is really a better understanding between your brokerage and your council as to, um, what kind of trends, what kind of atmosphere do you want to create? We know the walkability. We've read the strategic plan. We understand that aspect. We understand the aspects of Temple Terrace that are important to developers, your public safety, your community spirit and so forth. But we need to drill deeper onto that. And also one other thing, and Eric alluded to this somewhat, is timing. Once we submit an offer, developers, it particularly in today's market, they want rapid answers. So knowing your timeline, knowing what it is exactly. So knowing your timeline, knowing what it is exactly. So with the three parcels, okay, this is commercial, it's retail, this may be a standalone, and this is some type of residential. But fine tuning that to the details, so that we are not wasting time, your time, or a developer's time. We need to be very straightforward developers, builders like things, simple and precise.
So Ms. Tamargo, a follow-up question to that. If we, if we negotiate a contract with you guys, assuming that my council members support this idea, I think it would be beneficial for your group and us, and our, and our city manager, and our business development director to have a workshop. Now, as you know, we can only meet in the sunshine, but we're not doing anything secret. But I'd like to have a sit-down with all of us and your team, rather than us, Mr. Pauli knows it forwards and backwards, but I'd rather you hear, you know, when, when each of the council members speaks to this, you'll hear something a little different from each of us than if you hear it from me or from, you know, Mr. Pauli. So would that be something?
We certainly concur, and we like such.
So I do have another question, and I'm not sure who's best to answer this, Mr. Odom. You can, you can help me. So we have had discussions about framing incentives and deals. We've had several discussions publicly about that. And I think, from my perspective, I'm not a real estate agent, but from my perspective, one of the things that we haven't done as well as we maybe could is for us to establish what it is we really want, a little more specifically, and what it is we're willing to do to get that, rather than waiting for somebody to just walk through the door with it.
I concur 100%. And it's interesting, Mayor, that you bring up the, a little bit different from each city council, because as we are doing our due diligence on this, we heard a little bit different from each agent or developer that we knew it had some contact on the property. And so I think the general consensus was that, wow, there's a lot of differing ideas. And when there's not a firm footing of what the vision is, then you get pullback from the development community, because there's a tremendous amount of resources financially and human that are dedicated to these types of projects. If they don't feel like there's a clear understanding of what is expected of them, they just move on.
Right.
And so that, that's, I certainly would welcome that workshop to sit down and vet this out, and come up with a plan as to exactly what you, your vision is, and that way we can take it to the community and solicit those individuals that would be best suited for the type of vision that you have.
But we could also use a little help with structuring incentives. I hate to use that term, because it's, but, but there's a million ways to, to make a deal. There's people out there making money work better than we know how to make it work. And, and it's, I don't know that we've really hit a home run with that. And, you know, we're all, we're a little protective of property tax, because we need the TIF as part of our financial plan, but when it comes to fees, waivers, you know, those things are a little easier to negotiate. Maybe we could do some partial tax deferments for a period of time. You know, there's a lot of possibilities, but for us to sit up here, five, well, we're not amateurs on everything, but we're amateurs in real estate. And so it's difficult. So is that something that you are prepared to help us with in addition to just listing this?
Absolutely. I mean, you know, Deb has her tremendous amount of this type of experience. Also, I, I served on the CRA for downtown Tampa when the towers were built and the park was developed, the Curtis, Curtis Hickson Park, which has now become a showpiece for downtown Tampa. And that was done with incentives. And it was, it was sunsetting provisions that essentially allowed those, that park to be rebuilt and then use CRA money to develop this magnificent, I don't know how, if you've been down there, see it at night, or if there are any events, it really is, it, it turned from a, maybe not the most desirable place on the planet, to now it is one of the, the top areas in the state. And, and that happened with, as a result of a little bit of forgiveness on the front end to allow the developer to build it, makes sense. The back end, they get, received all those additional property taxes on the annuity stream from those, those now very high-priced condos that are, that are there. So there, there, these things can be structured in a win-win, and we'd welcome the opportunity to talk to you about that.
And all of that's in the shade of Temple Terrace.
Sure.
It was a joke.
One thing Eric failed to mention is his cultural side. He's one of the founders of the film festival, one of the founders of the music festival, well, and so many more amenities in the Tampa Bay area. He has been on the forefront, so.
Good. Vice Mayor Schistler.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Sounds like we've got potential for some good working relationship here. But part of the history of the whole project goes way back, way, way back. And it's been like 20 years now that we've been working on this. We really didn't turn any dirt till the last four years. So, and one, we, and we've had every possible permutation of what we want to build down there. We had charrettes where everybody got together and decided what they wanted, and it morphed from this to that and everything else. And we've gone from leave it as a green space, and then just work, work our way through it, to, you know, multi, I'm sorry, high-density, multi-use buildings that would pay off with TIF in two years. So, you know, I mean, we've, we've run the whole gamut. But we have a, a setting down there, a, an infrastructure now that gives the type of setting that we're looking for, that we're looking at. We've, I don't know the percentage of the development, but, you know, we have the Waverly Apartments, we have the, the shops on Bertha Palmer Drive, and, and so forth, the, the enigmas a little, a little bit south of Chicago. So we kind of have a, a, a set feel that we're, we're moving towards. But one of my questions to you would be, what's the market looking like? You know, at one point in time, prior to 2008, we talked about it, we wanted retail on the bottom and apartments on top, or, you know, residential on top, but there wasn't a builder on the planet that was willing to, to move forward with that. So we had to morph, and we had to come up with a different plan. Now we're talking real estate, and I mean residential on the back, commercial on the front, but on, on 56th Street. But we need to rely upon you to tell us, what's the market got? Mr. Pauli can only dig into that so much, and we can't expect him to, to read minds. But you guys are the pros from Dover, and we need you to tell us what's out there, you know? And I, and I know you need guidance from us, and, and I agree with the workshop concept. I think that, I think that's what's going to be very, very critical to moving forward with anybody, whether it's you or anybody else. It really wasn't a question, I apologize.
No, no, that's, I mean, it's, it's good to vet, to vet that, because for us, from our perspective, being able to sit down and spitball with you guys, and we can provide our knowledge of what we think, but we also have to understand how it fits into what you guys as, as a team want as well.
And that, that's going to take a give and take, which is a lot, a lot deeper than, than the time would permit tonight.
Right.
And give us an opportunity to see, you know, well, who are we talking with? What are your strengths? What are your, what are your potential weaknesses? And what can we bring to the table? What are you going to bring to the table? And it'll be a better, a better back and forth, I think.
Agreed.
And I'll stop there.
Council members, other questions? Councilmember Donahue.
Mine's more of a comment as well, is that sometimes what looks like a waste of money, let's look at U Lally's Park, all that, okay? You know, people are like, you must be kidding, you're wasting all that property, you're going to turn it into a park, into a green space? And then because of that green space and the building, it's now turned into a very high-profit area. So I think you keep hearing from us over and over, we're looking for a reason for people to go down there, unless you live there right now, few shops, grocery store. But now there will be homeowners who are living in that space, and we want other people to come there to enjoy. So we, we're looking for a center, something that will be an attractor, and that will take us from one end of the plaza onto the other end. So we have to figure out how to, where does that connector? And yeah, don't, I guess what I'm saying is, don't be afraid to bring us something that seems like it's futuristic, because that's exactly what they did down in downtown Tampa, and look what it did for them. So we don't want to go that big, we don't have that much space, but we would really like for people to have a reason to, to come here besides the new ice cream shop, you know, and a, and a restaurant, and a Starbucks. You know, it needs to be more than that, something, something unique to our area.
Understood. And it's, it's, it's interesting, you know, in terms of that, that you bring that up, something unique, I was, was, made an impression on me when I was 23-year-old out of college. I sat at a Merrill meeting with Dick Greco and Dave Fisher from St. Pete, and they had a particularly contentious debate over what should happen in the inner cities of downtown St. Pete and downtown Tampa. Dave Fisher wanted green space, and Dick says, that's just wasted money, because you have tax revenue coming in, if you, we need, we want to pave everything over. Well, guess who lives in St. Pete now? Dick Greco.
Yeah.
And, and so these sorts of things, that we understand the, the vision behind that, certainly I was a part of what happened with development of Curtis Hickson Park, serving on the CRE council. But then, I understand working inside of those environments, and I'm very curious, and again, it's outside of the scope of what, of tonight, because we'd be here for two hours. But I'm very interested to hear about the river space, because that's one space you look at and you say, this could really be something special, and there's, is a way that we could have enough land there to make something that somebody really wants, you're somewhat limited in terms of the zoning that's there now, but I, you could still see some sort of, of, of residential and park environment that could be attractive to people to come down to.
Councilmember Abel.
I don't have questions, but I'm ready for discussion.
Are there other questions?
I have a question from, from somebody. I don't, I don't think it's you guys.
Councilmember.
Procedural. If we accept Florida ROI now, then we authorize the city, you know, later on or just after the authorization, to enter into an agreement? And then will that agreement come back to us at a later date for us to approve?
Yes, exactly. That's, that's what I would propose, is that if it's the council's desire tonight, we would accept their proposal and direct the city manager and staff to enter into negotiations for a contract, which would then come back to us for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And, and the purpose for my bringing up the workshop, and would you help us with incentive things, is I would want that to be in the contract, if we did that.
Okay, thank you.
Was that satisfactory?
Yes.
Okay. Are there other questions? And then we'll open it up for discussion? Okay, we will discuss. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilmembers, discussion. Councilmember Abel.
You know, we've, we've said before that, you know, if you talk to each one of us individually, we might have a different vision for what we want downtown, but I don't really think it's a whole lot different, because, you know, before you even said your questions, I had written down two things. One was, schedule a workshop with these guys, and guidance on common incentives. So that's the exact same thing as what you said. So I think that, you know, we're on the same page, and we really just want to be able to move forward with the right guidance and insight from professionals who are experts in the area. So I, I'm ready to take some action here if that's the next step.
Yes, and, and I would propose to the council, if we're going to move on this tonight, that that workshop happened sooner than later, very soon after, because there are some, there's some decisions that this council needs to chase down. Most of those decisions involve the riverfront parcel. I know there are those who would like to retain that and preserve that. Right now, our financial plans don't really easily allow for that, but we have some pending property for sale that we are going to be making decisions on very soon. And so there's, there's some, the other thing that's happened since, you know, we have an advantage over, as time goes on, this isn't reflective of previous councils, we now have some stuff built. So now we have a better idea, well, we have enough of this, not enough of that, you know, we don't, we need 15 more of these, we need something, you know, so we have, as this thing goes, we have a little better idea. So I would suggest that that workshop happens sooner, so that they don't go out and clear the wrong forest.
I'm done, thank you.
Pick your Bush.
Make your motion.
I will make my motion. I move to, I guess, move forward with creating a contract with this company? Is that the, the direction?
Are you motioning that the city manager enter into negotiations with ROI?
Yes.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? We hope to see you very soon.
Absolutely, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Good presentation. Next item is another pleasant, we have a lot of pleasant stuff going on tonight. This is unusual.
Very unusual.
We are making appointments to the newly-created Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We, I know there's some discussion on this, but this, for, for folks who may not know what's going on, this is a new committee that the council has decided to form. Three members will be appointed to three-year terms, extending from April 19th, 2022 until April 19th, 2025. The other two members will be appointed for 18-month terms, extending from April 19th until October 19th, 2023. The reason for that is to stagger the terms, so that the whole board doesn't expire at the same day. And so prior to moving on on this topic, I think Councilmember Abel has some discussion, and then we'll move forward. Councilmember?
Yes, looking at the applicants, well, when we originally conceived of this committee, it was conceived of a five, as, as a five-member board with staggered terms. But looking at the applicants, we had a really good pool of interested applicants, and this is a, a topic that is of very high interest with community support from people who are, are experts and really familiar with this. So I would like to propose that we expand, we modify the resolution to expand the committee from five to seven, so that we could have a larger number, but still an odd number. And it allows us to bring more people in, and it allows us to have more insight. I thought about whether this would make it an unwieldy, sort of too many people, but it's a diverse group with a lot of different perspectives. And I think that, you know, it really boils down to what we want for our community, and that's a, a really strong pedestrian and cyclist support group. So I'd like to move that we expand this to a seven-member committee.
Okay, so we have a motion, I believe, a motion to expand the committee from five members to seven. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Discussion on the motion.
Is this one of those committees that would have alternates? So that you could, what do you have, nine here? You could literally?
That's, that's not included in the current motion.
I, I know. I'm just asking the question, and if, if you could appoint two as alternates, then you already have two people standing by. You have seven selected, and the other two would know that they would become the alternates. Is that a possibility? I'm looking to the attorney to find out.
What the, what you would be doing right now is, is amending the Resolution 16-22. It was specifically set out in that resolution that the committee shall be composed of five residents to serve three terms. Three members will constitute a quorum. It does not state anything about alternates currently. If you want to change that particular provision, that's up to you, and if you want to have alternates, you should probably include that in, in the motion.
I'd be happy to revise the motion.
All right.
As well as.
Councilmember Abel. Well, councilmember.
And you'd have to determine what a quorum would be. So with five, with five, right now, three is the quorum. If you're going to make this seven, then I suggest five be the quorum.
Councilmember Donahue, did you get your answer sufficient?
I did, I did. And so the question would be, if she's willing to change her motion?
She's asking for the floor, so we're about to find out. Councilmember Abel.
I am willing to change my motion, and I would love to incorporate all the people who applied, all nine of them. So I'd like to amend my motion to alter the resolution to change the number of people to five with two alternates.
Okay, I'm confused now.
No, to seven with two.
Did I say it wrong?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I misspoke.
Okay.
Seven with two alternates.
Okay, so the motion is now to expand the original resolution, so that this committee would be comprised of seven regular members and two alternates.
Yes.
Now, I need two more things in your motion, I would suspect. One is that what the quorum would be, which I think was been recommended at five. And then two would be, if we were to do that, we would need to stagger the terms to four people and three. people and three people instead of, so that, those two things would also need to be. So, you would want to expand from five to seven, add two alternates, stagger the terms four and three, and stipulate that the quorum is five.
Got it.
That's a lot. Now, your motion got this big all of a sudden.
I would like to amend my motion to have a committee of seven with two alternates. Make it so that the terms are staggered with four on the three years and three on the 18 months and make it so that the quorum would be five. Did I ask if anything?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Wait, because I am, I was the original seconder, so don't I have to?
You do. Do we have a, do we have a new second?
I will, but I don't support that. But I will second it so we can talk more.
Okay, we have a motion and a fairly reluctant second.
Yes.
So, you have the floor. Councilmember Chambers.
Code board is currently seven members with four as their quorum and two alternates. I would like to see four instead of five. I think it's easier to get four. We added one and it, four is still, and we went from three. Now, it's not, it's not, it's not an odd number for a quorum, but it just would make it, it would make it the same as code board and our other boards that have seven.
If Councilman Chambers is requesting, I guess, a friendly amendment to...
I would like to amend my motion. Well, let me ask you...
You don't have to. I mean, that's my, that's only one guy's opinion.
I do think that consistency would be important if that's, I didn't realize what the...
Yeah, I'd like to make it consistent, so a quorum of four makes sense. So, yeah, I'll amend it to that.
That's sufficient legally?
That's, that's fine.
And I'm good with that second.
Okay, so we have a revised motion. Everything's the same except the quorum would be four instead of five and we have a revised second.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to expand to seven, add two alternates, four would be the quorum, and the terms would be staggered, four would be three years and three would be 18 months.
How about the alternates? I'm a little confused. Okay, I'm sorry, just going around a couple of times, so.
Okay, well, I'll say it again.
Okay.
All right, so the motion...
Let me tell all members of the committee.
Okay.
How many total members of the committee? Seven or nine?
Seven plus two alternates.
So, five actives?
No, 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 no. Seven regular members plus two alternates.
Two alternates. So, the slate of nine would all be appointed tonight?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, no, because we'd have to figure out who, which two would be the alternates if we were going to do that.
All right.
Well, I think we vote for seven.
Stand by.
Would the alternate, would one alternate be a three-year term and one be an 18-month term?
No, just appoint the alternates to three-year terms.
Whatever position.
Yeah.
Well, I guess my problem, my concern is that, okay, so the alternate scenario, if a member can't be there, then the alternate can be in the meeting.
Okay. First, let's make sure everybody understands the motion and then we'll open it for discussion. Everybody's got a firm grip on what the motion is? Okay, Vice Mayor.
Okay, so, I'm thinking of it logistically for the city clerk's office, okay? We're going to have to assemble a quorum of four. And if we have nine people, from a pool of nine, basically, if the regular, if not enough of the regular seven members can attend, then they dip into the alternate pool to sit on, sit as part of the quorum. Is that correct?
Correct.
Or a part of the seven total?
Correct.
For the B, okay, all right, okay.
Just like the other.
Well, I just want to make sure because it's, it's, it was a little confusing. I want to make sure I understood it before I went to...
It sounds to me like you do. Is that other discussion on the motion? I do have a couple of things and this would not be my choice for a couple of reasons. I've been on a lot of city, well, a lot, I've been on a few city boards, not to sound like I've been on dozens, I've been on a few. It gets, as you said, you thought about this, it gets a little unwieldy when you have a lot and you have seven regular members. Very often, the two alternates will show up also just because they're interested and dedicated to the cause. Now, you've got a room full of nine people plus you, plus the clerk, plus whatever staff you might want there to make a presentation or ask questions of. So, you've got potentially 10, 11, maybe 12 people in the room. Your meetings are going to go on forever because everybody's going to have something to say on every little topic. And it's not that they're not good, it's that there's just a lot. I just, I, I would, this would not be my choice. On the other hand, I asked you to be the council liaison to this committee and you took this on. And I'm not going to start my very first thing is to try to tell you, no, you can't do what you want to do when I've asked you to do it. I am concerned that you've put a lot of fish in this bowl. And I know we have some very good candidates. I understand the problem. And that's a good problem to have. But I hope that we're not robbing the committee of effectiveness because your hours, your meetings are going to go on for two hours. So, so, other discussion on the motion. Councilmember Chambers?
Currently, Riverwatch Task Force, it's just informational. We have, there's five members and two alternates. And on school support, there's seven members. So, we're in line with all that or not. So, you know, with the original motion of five people and no alternates, you know, so...
Okay, other discussion on the motion, yes?
I will say to your concern, you know, I really didn't take this lightly. I talked to a lot of people who are on these different boards throughout the county.
You don't take anything lightly. I know better than that.
You know I don't take anything lightly. And I did think about the implications of that. But I think it really boils down to the chair and being able to manage a group like that and stay on the agenda and that kind of thing. And I think that, you know, we have great people and it'll be possible to do that. And I think this is probably for the best, although I understand your concerns, but anyway.
Okay, very good. So, we have a motion, a second, we've had discussion. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Resolution is modified. We now have the next order of business. We have nine applicants. We have seven regular positions and two alternate positions. And we also have to, well, no, how are you going to figure out who's on which term? The number of votes? Well, but everybody's going to get the same number of votes if we vote for all nine people.
Nope. They're only voting for four initially, right? For four, for the three-year terms?
Oh, yeah. It's different now. Well, then I'm going to need another...
We don't have enough ballots for that.
We have another set. We have, do have another set. Do you want to make one more?
We can...
Seven and the highest votes were the longest term. That doesn't work.
I'm not sure how the clerk was...
Well, the clerk had a good system, but it doesn't work anymore since we've modified the...
We're going to make three sets. And so, the first set will be for the three-year term for top four people.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Wait.
Yeah, where are you...
Explain that a little slower.
So, my thinking is you're going to vote your top four choices for the three-year term. And we're going to tally it up and tell you who came out on top for that. And then, we'll have to cross, we have another ballot. We'll have to cross off the people that you voted for and pass out another ballot, right?
Okay, I got you.
If we only vote for four...
And then the last two left will be the alternates.
You'll vote for four out of the nine.
Yes, got you.
That's it. You'll vote for four out of the nine.
Pass out another ballot.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So, we're only picking four?
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, if I understand this correctly, we're...
Your meetings will be shorter than this one.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
Well, we didn't plan for this, so this is, we're doing this on the fly, but this will work.
We have to talk about it.
So, we will soon have another ballot. We will do this in a couple of rounds. The first round, the first round will be, we will all vote for four members. Those four members will be the three-year term people, right? Then we will get a fresh ballot. And the remaining people, there will be five names left available. We will then vote for three people to serve an 18-month term, right? So, then there will be two left and those two will be the alternates who will serve three-year terms, okay? So, in the meantime, while we're waiting for these extra ballots, we have some of the applicants here. What, Cheryl?
So, she, we have the second set. We'll just cross up the ones that are voted and pass those out to you.
That's fine, okay. So, I don't know how many of the nine are here. And we will go alphabetically. Is Candy Ashley here?
She was here.
She had to leave.
Okay, is Dennis Barber here? Mr. Barber. So, I would ask those who are coming up to be mindful that we have wasted a lot of time here trying to figure this out. So, please don't filibuster us. Just tell us a little bit about who you are and why you want to serve on this and please try to be as brief as you can.
I'll try not to filibuster, but my experience with the county commission before them, they always wanted to filibuster.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Assistant Mayor, council members, and distinguished guests. My name is Dennis Barber, better known as Buzz Barber when I worked with the county. And I just wanted to make a few minutes to put a face with an application. I'm applying for the position on the bike and pedestrian advisory committee. 10 years ago, I retired as a general manager of three with Hillsborough County Public Works Traffic Services Safety Programs. The programs I managed were bicycle safety, pedestrian safety, residential traffic calming, neighborhood traffic calming. Those two were known as speed hump programs by everybody. Neighborhood street lighting, school zone safety, and senior zone safety. Needless to say, my team was a little bit busy. We had two programs awarded best practices by FDOT, the school zone safety program and the bike and pedestrian safety program. We won a national award from the National Transportation Safety Department for the senior zone. You see it in front of, up here on Fowler Avenue and another one out on Waters. All that is to say, I'm here to offer you the experience and knowledge back to the community if you want it. And if there are no questions, I thank you for this chance to continue to serve my community.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Thank you very much. Peter Davit here. Peter Davit. Gina D'Angelo, I see that she is here. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. First, I wanted to say thank you for creating this board and recognizing the need for it. I have lived and worked here in Temple Terrace since 2007. And I work on Boulder Parkway. I bike to work from time to time and the only street that has a bike path is River Hills Drive. While it is a very scenic route, it is really the only route I can take because of course at that hour, there's a lot of traffic on Druid Hills and Ridge Dale, et cetera. So, it would be nice to have, to have a change of scenery every now and then. And like you on the city council, I believe that we can do better to improve the quality of life here in Temple Terrace so that people will want to move here, live here, and make it a more enjoyable, what's the word I'm looking for? More enjoyable experience. So, I would like to make, I would like to help make that happen. And if selected, I will serve in the best interest of the citizens of Temple Terrace. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. D'Angelo. Eric Kravitz here tonight. Welcome, Mr. Kravitz. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for inviting me. I actually am recent here, recently moved here from Germany where I've lived for the last 20 years. So, I'm not a professional cyclist by any means, but I did a lot of biking over there. I biked here last, yet, just earlier, so I'm parked up front. And I love to walk around. I find the city to be incredibly beautiful and really lush and I think it's a fantastic place. And I'd love to be able to provide any input that the city council would like to have from me to keep it that way and keep it going on the right trajectory over time. So, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Kravitz. And I see Philip Levy is not here. Manuel Oksako?
It's Wahaqah.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. I knew I'd messed that name up. I apologize.
That's fine. Thanks for having me here. Thanks for inviting me. I'll be short. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I ask that you offer me an appointment to the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee because I'm busy. I'm married. I have three children under six. Two of them are in school, the other just under a year. My wife works full-time at USF. I'm a part-time substitute teacher. Because of all that and because of the concomitant stresses of life, which I know we all experience, I want to be able to take one thing off of our collective plate, worrying about being a pedestrian or cyclist in our city. You make time for things that are important to you. And for me, seeing cyclists and pedestrians, being able to use streets safely is a thing I'm more than willing to give my time to for my family, myself, and our community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Is Grant Para here? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm currently 43 years old. I've lived here for nine years. I have a son who is seven and we enjoy riding bikes all over the place. And I look forward to being able to improve what we have here and making it a draw for people, not only residents here, but others make a destination to come here because I feel like we have great opportunity to be able to do that. And I look forward to working with you guys on that mission.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. And Jan Resch. Good evening, Ms. Resch.
Good evening. Last but not least, I'll keep it really brief. You have my application so you know my background and a little bit about what I've done and where I've worked and so forth. My name is Jan Resch. I've been a resident of Temple Terrace for about four and a half years. And I submitted an application to serve on this committee because in my opinion, anything we can do to enhance the opportunities for bicycling, pedestrian activity, and so forth directly goes to the quality of life that I think we all enjoy here. I certainly found that to be the case for me personally. I'm an avid walker. I probably walk an hour, hour and a half every day. And I found it to be an excellent way to get to know my neighborhoods and my neighbors. And what I've observed, I think, over the last year in particular is that's what creates community. It's when we have that opportunity to connect and interconnect with one another. And access to our streets, accessibility and safety and so forth, I think is a driver that will allow us to all do that. So, I know you have my application with my background. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I thank you for your consideration and for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Resch. Thank you so much. Okay, council members, so the first step in this process is right now, we're voting four people to three-year terms. Hold on just a second. I have hanging chads here.
So, for the three-year term, Councilmember Chambers voted for Candy Ashley, Dennis Barber, Manuel M., I'm not going to, Manuel O., and Jan Resch. Vice Mayor Sishla voted for Candy Ashley, Dennis Barber, Gina D'Angelo, and Philip Councilmember Abel voted for Candy Ashley, Dennis Barber, Manuel O., and Jan Resch. Councilmember Donahue voted for Candy Ashley, Eric Kravitz, Grant Para, and Jan Resch. And Mayor Ross voted for Dennis Barber, Peter Davit... Councilmember Donahue voted for Candy Ashley, Eric Kravitz, Grant Para, and Jan Resch. And Mayor Ross voted for Dennis Barber, Peter Davitt, Philip Levy, and Jan Resch.
Jeopardy music or something? Thank you. Quiet. Need Jeopardy music. Jeopardy music? Yeah. I'm gonna have the supervisor of elections here.
Brian, can you hum something or a little background music?
The most votes will be Candy Ashley, Dennis Barber, and Jan Resch. We currently have a tie for the fourth member between Philip Levy and Manuel Wahaaka.
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 And we're gonna break the tie with a coin toss.
Of course we do. Yes. How could we not?
Because there are five of us.
We talked originally about breaking the tie with a coin toss.
Well, does one of them become a three-year automatically?
Yeah, but which one is the?
Right, but I mean, if you have a coin toss, they're both in. They're just, one of them hasn't.
Well, we've got, because we don't know how many each voted, we could vote again that someone's gonna get three, someone's gonna get two at the least. So, either the.
There's a tie for the fourth slot between Phil Levy and Manuel.
Awaka.
Awaka.
Wahaaka.
Wahaaka.
We will get it before the night's out, I promise.
Okay, Pam.
Yeah, I'm not gonna decide.
Mr. Wahaaka's here.
That's not a good test.
Not a good test.
We can have him pick a side of the coin, and if that side wins, he gets the.
I think you just have two people now on a ballot, and you should just vote again for one or the other.
Okay.
And the winner would become the other.
Four-year term.
Three-year term, yes.
Okay. So, now we have, we're voting between these two candidates.
On the back, vote between one of those two.
And the winner.
Oh, that's the one already, yeah, okay, on the back.
We're voting between Philip Levy and Manuel Wahaaka.
We're just writing his name down, right.
On the back? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, please. Well, Mayor Ross and Vice Mayor Schisler voted for Phil Levy, and the other council members all voted for Manuel.
Wahaaka.
Wahaaka. Okay. So, would you please read the slate of four winners? Cheryl? We need the slate of four winners, and then we're appointing Phil Levy to an 18-month term.
Yes.
That's the result of this round of voting. So, would you please read the slate of four three-year term members so we can get a motion at this point?
The four, the four appointees that have been voted for the three-year terms are Candy Ashley, Dennis Barber, Jan Resch, and Manuel Wahaaka.
Is there a motion?
I didn't hear the fourth name. I'm sorry.
Manuel.
Candy, Grant, Manuel, Manuel, and who?
Candy, Dennis, Jan, Emmanuel.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those four are appointed to three-year terms. Okay. Now, the next, we need more ballots.
Okay.
We're willing to get a vote for two.
We're only voting for two because Phil Levy is already by default one of these three. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a good thing that this city council is not in charge of the Supreme Court. Councilmember Chambers.
Right. I want to point out, it's not our fault that they made it very difficult on us by being very good.
This is a good problem to have.
It is a great problem to have.
This is a good problem to have. Okay. So, you can check Philip Levy off because he's already appointed to an 18-month term, and then vote for two others.
Do I have that right? Oh, you've pressed him now. Okay.
So, she's already on. He's already on. Don't read it yet. Uh huh. There should be two names checked on your ballots.
I'm sorry. Here's one more.
All right.
Councilmember Chambers voted for Gina D'Angelo and Eric Kravitz. Vice Mayor Schisler voted for Gina D'Angelo and Grant Para. Councilmember Donahue voted for Eric Kravitz and Grant Para. Councilmember Abel voted for Peter Davitt and Eric Kravitz. And Mayor Ross voted for Peter Davitt and Eric Kravitz.
Another tie.
Another tie.
Again, another tie.
Sounds like another tie. You have another tie.
The one with the most votes is Eric Kravitz, and then we do have a tie between Grant, Gina, and Peter. There are Gina and Grant.
A three-year tie?
Yes.
Okay. Can I, I request my ballot back, Cheryl?
Yep. Andy's over here.
Is that legit?
Right here. There we go.
Mayor Ross voted for Peter Davitt and Gina D'Angelo.
You will. You will.
So, these, with the amended vote, our second highest would be Peter DeVit.
I'm sorry, I missed that. I'm not following.
Who would the three people?
Yeah.
Did you amended your vote? Okay. Let me just fix that. The amended vote would be, I see the signature here, it would be, the second highest would be Gina D'Angelo.
We need the three names.
So, it would be Philip Levy.
Gina D'Angelo, and Eric Kravitz.
And the alternates, then?
Would be, the alternates would be Grant Para and Peter DeVit.
Everybody have that? Somebody like to make a motion? Now, remember, we need one motion to appoint two people, three people, to 18-month terms and to appoint the two alternates to three-year terms. Do it in the same motion.
I'll move to appoint Phil Levy, Gina D'Angelo, and Eric Kravitz for an 18-month term and to have Peter Davitt and Grant Para have alternate positions.
Second.
For a three-year term.
For a three-year term.
Second.
Okay. Motion to second. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Thank you all for your service and your patience.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for indulging.
We had a good system, and I kind of got messed up with the expansion of the, so apologize for that. Okay. Next item. I believe we've had this almost two hours, and we're just now doing this. Approval of the April 5th city council meeting.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion on the minutes? If none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda? We do have a three-minute time limit for all members of the public who wish to address items not on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. We ask that speakers come to the podium, state your name and city of residence so that we know who you are. Are there members of the public who would like to address the council? Seeing none, consent agenda. Acting City Manager Ken Albano.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. Only one item to come before you this evening as part of the consent agenda, that being the purchase of a new digital interview room management system for the police department. Our system's audio/video recording quality has steadily declined over the past few years and is incapable of recording high-definition video, has limited storage capacity, and does not allow video to be received from multiple vantage points within the interview room. In preparation for this purchase, three quotes were obtained by the police department. The Linear Systems quote was chosen for this purchase as it was determined to meet all required department specifications while at the same time being the lowest of the three quotes that were received. The purchase of the new digital interview room management system was previously approved by city council as part of the police department's fiscal year 2022 budget. Upon receiving council's authorization, payment of $9,949 will be made to Linear Systems Incorporated out of Ventura, Cucamonga, California, from the police department's investigative services capital account.
Thank you, Chief. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Consent agenda is approved. Next item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with JD Contractors LLC in the amount of $188,550 for the city hall roof replacement project. Public Works Director of Operations Ray LeBlanc is here to explain. Welcome, Mr. LeBlanc.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. We are seeking approval of a resolution that would authorize the city manager to execute a contract with JD Contractors LLC in the amount of $188,550 for city hall replacement roof project. This roof here has had several patches over the years dating back to 1977, as far as we could find out. They're no longer effective. The roof is compromised with shallows, with ponding water. Temperature variations in the police department are all over the place. We prepared documents in-house and with the assistance of ImagineNet, and they were publicly opened here February 23rd, 2022. We had a screening committee that included the city engineer Brian McCarthy, police chief Ken Albano, myself, and interim building official Dallas Foss. We used criteria that was on page five for evaluation and award of the RFP, and the committee unanimously recommends that the city hall roof replacement contract be awarded to JD Contractors LLC in the amount of $188,550. They have been in business since 1998. We thoroughly vetted them. A possible score of the high being 20 was achieved by them on the worksheet. The funds will come from two different accounts, $120,000 from building improvements, $68,550 from CIT contingency account. It's split because of the project costs have gone up, and after a thorough evaluation of the roof by many roofers, including ABM and the air conditioning installations, we are recommending that staff, staff is recommending that you authorize city manager to execute a contract with JD Contractors for the city hall roof replacement project. I'll stand for any questions. Kevin Martin, the principal of JD Contractors, is here. Should you have any further questions?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member questions? Vice Mayor Schisler?
I do have a question. You probably can't answer this, but when we did the budget last year, the estimate, the projection was $120,000. It's coming in almost 37% higher. Is there, other than just supply chain issues and overall pressure from inflation, so is there, is there, how did we come up with $120,000? And I know you didn't do it. Okay, I know this was probably came from someplace else, but it's a pretty good jump.
You answered.
Been to the gas pump lately?
But no, I understand that. I understand that.
You answered your own question, but I can elaborate on that. In 2010, they put, we put a skin on this roof for $33,000 and change that had a 10-year warranty, and 11 years later, it leaks. The projection, the budget number of $120,000 would have stopped the roof from leaking, and you'd be back here in five, eight years. That was one way to do it. The best interest of the city was the process we just went through. That was a budget number, not given by me, that at the time I said, that's, you know, you can fix the roof for $12. You want to do it the right way and get a 20-year warranty, it was more than the budgeted number, which I didn't put out there.
No, you answered my question. Thank you. It ends up being a higher scope, a larger scope and detail, more detail than what we originally projected.
Yeah.
That's understandable.
Yeah. The project and the proposals were somewhat delayed by previous events, and I will say that the contractor has readily agreed to maintain his price as long as he gets an award and in their future with materials and supply changes. That's where we're at.
You answered my question. Thanks.
It's needed. It's $100,000 less than the garbage truck.
That's comforting.
I don't know if that matters to you, but.
It'll last a lot longer.
Twenty years.
Other questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the contract as proposed.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc.
You're anticipating 90 to 100 days to, so we're gonna get it done. Thank you.
Next item is a resolution approving a task work order to CPH, Inc. for the Brager Drive and Bannock Burn Avenue Storm Water Improvement Project. City engineer Brian McCarthy will explain. Brian, every time we see you, it costs us money.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening, honorable mayor, City Council, Brian McCarthy, City Engineer. I'm here this evening to seek approval toward a design task work order to CPH, Inc. for the Brager Drive and Bannock Burn Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project. So here on the screen is just kind of a bird's eye view of the area. Represented in purple are the stormwater network, and then in red is the star that kind of indicates where the flooding is occurring at the intersection. So in our next slide, we're going to show you a video of what a resident took back in October of 21. Kind of, just to briefly kind of explain what you're going to see is that you're going to see a lot of ponding that's happening at this intersection. The two stormwater inlets that you see first are going to be already overtopping. There's a ditch inlet that you'll see that's still flowing. You'll also see just how fast the water is flowing down Brager Drive. And then the water essentially will just pond and then overtops it into the homeowners that are on the south side of Bannock Burn. So here's the first stormwater inlet. You can already see that it's already full of water. It's ponding. It's going down their driveway. He crosses the street to look at the other stormwater inlet. And there's relatively no flow going on here. Here's the ditch inlet, where you can see that there is water flowing into it. And he does look into it, so you can see the pipe network isn't full yet. It's still flowing. He walks over to Brager Drive. You can just see just how fast the water is moving down this road. So the houses on the south side, once the water stages above the curb and gutter there, it starts flowing down their driveways and into their, I won't say into their houses, but through their yards. So again, just kind of looking at the bird's eye view again, what's happening is that there's a large elevation difference on the north side of Brager. And so you have all this water basically flowing down Druid Hills and down Brager towards all the homes on the south of Bannock Burn. And so part of CPH's scope is to do a survey, a stormwater report as well, to look at options, design and construction plans. Last year, we budgeted $25,000 for this project. Originally, staff was going to design this project in-house. However, due to availability and resources, we decided to pass this on to a consultant. So that said, staff recommend City Council approve the design task work order to CPH under the existing General Professional Services Agreement for the Brager Drive and Bannock Burn Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project in the amount of $65,859.62 to be provided from account number 130-1721-541.63-17. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member questions? Council members, vice mayor.
Yes. Sorry. Okay. How much is the other shoe going to cost now? The other, the other part of the project? And about when will that hit?
The other?
The actual?
The construction?
The actual construction.
So depending upon what we decide in design, so there's a couple of options, but right now we had budgeted for $250,000 for construction.
About when? How, let me rephrase that. When is this deliverable, ready?
The design project typically will take about a year.
About a year? Okay. So it'll be two budgets from now?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions, council members? Is this one of the projects that we're planning to charge back to the ARPA funds?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Good. If it's as acceptable, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion, and I think Councilmember Abel got you with the second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The next item is pulled. It was a resolution approving the subdivision plat application SP 22-2 for the plat of fifteen point zero seven plus or minus acres of real property addressed as 8802 Industrial Drive with a folio number of 031218-0005. That item is pulled. Gus Carpus, if you want to give us a brief explanation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. That item has been pulled until such time our surveyor can review the proposed plat and give their comments. That is a pass-through. So at this time, the applicant had not paid for that review, so we are waiting for that. And I believe Mr. McCarthy had just received the check for them, and so that information will be sent to the surveyor. Once we receive the comments from the surveyor, then we can continue with the process.
Thank you, Mr. Carpus. Next item is the first public hearing, first reading of ordinance approving the zoning reclassification of 13201 Telecom Drive, otherwise known as RZP 22-1. I'd open the public hearing, and in the interest of full disclosure, I would like to tell everybody that this involves the USF Credit Union, of which my wife is a, on the supervisor committee board of. So that's not a financial entanglement, and there's no financial gain other than our personal account is there. But I do want to disclose that. I don't want somebody to say, oh, the mayor's wife is on the board, and therefore there's, so, anyway. I just wanted to put that out there. If anyone is here and intends to speak on this matter, I would ask you to stand and be sworn in by the city clerk.
Please, please, we thought we talked to nothing but to help you go.
Thank you.
Very good. City Attorney, would you make inquiry into ex parte communications?
Yes. If anyone has had any ex parte communication, either oral or written, with regard to this matter, please state whether you have, when that occurred, with whom it was, and what the sum and substance of that communication was.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I've had none. If my wife knows about this, she has not brought it up.
I've had none.
I've had none.
Senior Planner Gus Carpus.
Okay. Once again, good evening. I have a presentation for you. So as the mayor said tonight, you have RZP 22-01, which is a rezoning, zoning reclassification request to rezone five point eight acres of property that's located on 13201 North Telecom Drive. The property itself right now is part of a fifteen point six acre parcel located south of Woodstock Drive and east of Telecom, oh, I can't even read my own map there. Telecom Drive. Currently, the address is 13201. As this goes through the process, if it's approved through the city, through the plating and all that other good stuff, the address will need to be changed because the parcel created will no longer be on Telecom. The current zoning is planned office research facilities, so prof, they're looking to rezone the property to PD. Okay. So prior, prior to the plating process, somewhere in February before March, the county accepted a legal description subdivision of the property, which is something I'm still trying to get an answer on from them. They can accept that at the county level without our approval, whereas a plat, they need to have our sign off, our resolution, and our approval type. Apparently, they do not need that. So this five point eight acres is shown now. It is a legal PID with the county on the west side. So the five point eight acres, the east parcel outlined in yellow, is what would be rezoned at this request. The nine point eight acres on the west would remain prof zoning and is still currently owned by USF and would remain in the ownership of USF. I believe their future plans is to put an office building there. Past the rezoning, they have a conceptual site plan. The proposed use would be for an inpatient rehabilitation hospital. This would be to serve patients with, as they say, complex nursing, medical management, and rehabilitative needs. So it's more of a physical-type rehabilitation. From what they are showing us now, it would be three stories in height and roughly sixty-two thousand square foot. It would operate twenty-four hours, seven days a week. Staffing would vary from sixty-five during the day to forty-five persons during the night. And the majority of the patients would be received from acute care hospitals, and the average stay would be twelve to fourteen days. Here are some renderings that they did, conceptual elevations that they did submit at this point. This company does have a number of facilities throughout the country, so this is kind of a similar-type deal that they're looking to do here. So the Development Review Committee did review this material in terms of the rezoning. Again, they have not seen anything for a site plan or anything like that at this point, and they did recommend approval. The Planning Commission did review this on March 15th, and they did recommend approval also, finding that it's in compliance with the long-range planning goals in the surrounding neighborhood and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff also recommends that the council approve the first reading for the ordinance approving the zoning reclassification for application RZP 22-01, a rezoning five point eight acres of the property from planned research office facilities to planned development for the subject property. It does not, sure, the applicant is here, but I can stand to answer questions. Is it? Okay. Well, if you were speaker, you were supposed to stand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did.
Okay.
Did you want to speak?
Would, would you like to present? It's up to you. It's optional.
I mean, I can address any questions that you might have.
But I am here to address any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member questions? Council member, vice mayor.
Yeah. Now, USF Credit Union owns the property.
Correct.
I hate to sound cheap, but are they tax exempt, or are they, what's their?
They are not. They're not tax exempt, but I don't know if they're conveying this property to somebody who is.
I believe they're, they're going to be conveying it to this, and this entity is not tax exempt either.
Okay. All right. Just curious. Thank you.
Other questions? Council members, other questions? I have a procedural question for you, Gus. You alluded to the county approving the split of this property. I don't recall that's happening before, so what's the story with that?
I'm still trying to get an answer from the county. I don't exactly know why. I'm trying to get through their zoning department. It also, with this previous request on the agenda also, within light, they've already created the lot, but they're coming to get the plat now. They did it the similar way, where they submitted a legal description of the parcel. It was conveyed to them, and they have a PID and an address, but it was never platted.
So this is a little aside, I think it's a wonderful project. It doesn't have anything to do with the project. It's a great project, and had they come to us to split the property, I would have been wholeheartedly in favor of it. But I am concerned about the implications of that. So a little aside, I know we're here to approve the rezoning. I don't want to get dragged into something else. But if you could please, when you get to the bottom of this, let, let me know, because I'm curious as to how this, is there something that needs to change on the county level? Or, I, I don't know. So if you could just let me know what's going on with that, please.
Yes, sir. If you thought navigating city government was tough, try going through Hillsborough County.
Well, and let me know if I can help with that, if there's, if you run into a wall. I, I, the county's very good to us. I don't want to make the impression that they're, but I do question why they're splitting lots without our having a chance.
You're correct. It does create situations where, in this instance, if they were to come for us and ask for a site plan, and it didn't meet our dimensional requirements, or a bunch of different requirements, all of a sudden, they've got a legal lot of record, and we're saying, hey, we.
Right. Well, and it could also be a disservice to an applicant, because they might want to build something, and the city would tell them, well, you need to put another five acres on this. And then they come to us, when the county's already blessed it. And so it could be a disservice to them too. So anyway.
Again, in this case, USF actually did this. The applicant hasn't. The applicant was aware that they needed to plat this. I already knew what it was going to look like, but USF did it.
Okay. Well, you get my point, so. Council members, is there a motion to approve? Wait. I did not close the public hearing and asked the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning five point eight plus-minus acres of real property located south of Woodstock Road and west of North Telecom Parkway, addressed as 13201 Telecom Drive, folio number 199551-0670 from zoning classification, planned research office facilities to planned development for RZP 2201, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second by Vice Mayor. Any discussion on the motions? Not? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Ordinance is adopted on first reading. Will appear for second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022. Thank you, Gus. Next item is a resolution accepting a canine memorial and authorizing a site preparation expenditure. Please, Chief Ken Albano.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, once again, council members. Before you this evening, for your consideration and approval is the acceptance of what will become a regional canine memorial and the authorization of expenditures toward required site preparation. As you may recall, Travis Wright, the president of the West Side Chapter of the Nam-Nights Motorcycle Club, previously proposed donating the canine memorial to the city at the April 5th, 2022 City Council meeting. At that time, Mr. Wright indicated that approximately thirty thousand dollars had been raised by the club to cover the initial costs associated with establishing the memorial. These costs included making and installing the canine sculpture, the pedestal upon which the canine will be placed, and the installation and inscription of the brick pavers that will surround the monument. While several sites within the city were considered, the city hall parking lot entrance from 113th Street was ultimately selected as the most appropriate and cost-effective location. However, some modification to the site are required in order to comply with city and state building codes. It is therefore recommended that City Council adopt a resolution accepting the donation and installation of the canine memorial and authorizing the preparation of the site by Aziz Construction Company Incorporated under an existing city contract for concrete flatwork at a cost of $7,684.03. Requested funds are currently available within the fiscal year 2022 budget, general fund, grounds, maintenance account. With that, I'll stand for any questions. I'll sit for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member questions? Council member questions? A question for the city attorney. Are you satisfied that this resolution is sufficient protection for the city if things go sideways during the erection, or the construction of this, or?
It's not up to me to decide that. It's up to you to decide. The thing is, we are now accepting full responsibility for this project. They, they're, I can still do, the resolution isn't addressing any type of an arrangement that we have with the people who are, I guess, I don't know. I guess they're installing the dog, and they will later install some of the blocks. But most of this preparation is going to be, is us. We're doing that, and so we're taking full responsibility for preparation of the site. So I don't have anything signed with this group at all with regard to any other work that they're doing.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Mayor? If I could, just some additional comments. I mean, it's not unheard of, and it's not, it's not the only donation of a monument that we've had come before the city and that we've accepted. The preparations that we will be doing is preparing the site itself and to come into compliance. And Brian can speak more to it if you would like, but there's some ADA issues that had to be addressed so that the site would, would come into compliance. The installation, the laying of the pavers, the preparation of the site itself, the placing of the monument, that's all being done, including the inscription. The stone, the, the pavers will be in place. They will come up and go back down, and replacement pavers, temporary pavers, will sit there when annually, I think they've planned that they will inscribe new names on, on pavers going forward. But all of the, all of the actual installation, other than the curbing and the sidewalks and the things that were, that were, are attached as preparations that Aziz will be doing, all the rest of that is being done by the, the Nam-Nights have a in-kind contractor coming in to do that. in to do that.
Thank you, Chief. Other questions? Council members? Council member Chambers?
Would any of this work be required to be done if the memorial wasn't put in? I mean, I know it's demolishing curbing and the existing ramp, but would all that have to be done anyway to get this, anything up to speed if it wasn't for this memorial?
In response to that, I would have to say yes at some point, and Brian could expand on this as well. The sidewalk project itself is something that's currently being considered, and that would connect the end of the street to the entranceway here to City Hall, and then, and having done that, you'd be able to walk to 56th Street as well. So that was something in the works. I think this project brought it to light, that there was some ADA compliance issues with the sidewalks. So at some point, yes, I guess the answer would be yes, not necessarily as soon as it has come before council for a decision on it, but ultimately, there was an ADA compliance issue there that would have had to have been addressed.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted. Excuse me, pardon me, council business. Carry over council business. Vice Mayor Schuster.
It's not really carry, but it's a continuation of discussion from earlier tonight. I just would like to have council keep in mind, with the few resolutions we did tonight, we overspent our budget by over $100,000 already, just with the two that we did. Now, there's reasons for it, understandable. The only one that I would question would be maybe doing the, doing the, maybe need more thought, is the one regarding the tasking contract. We've talked at length about utilizing USF and interns and so forth, and maybe working with them some that just, I would just hope that the department heads think about projects as they come forward. $100,000 here, $100,000 there, and we've destroyed our budget in short order. So just, you know, we don't want to have an issue, but that could turn into death by a thousand cuts. So I just want, just everybody just keep in mind, a little bit here, a little bit there can create ourselves a budgetary issue going forward. That's my only comment. That's just as an explanation as to why the questions that I was asking during your presentations, and I'll stop there.
Can you, I have a question about that, Vice Mayor. I know the roof came in higher, what did, what else did we?
The tasking contract was in the budget for $25,000.
The what's that?
The Breger Avenue tasking contract was $25,000.
Yeah, but that's charging back to ARPA, too. That's charging back to ARPA.
The project is ARPA, is the tasking contract ARPA?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have that, we have most of that money spent for other things, too, anyway. Anyway, I just, it just adds up quickly, that's all I'm saying.
It does, and the effects of this inflationary period that we're seeing, I mean, we, our bills go up, too, so I mean, it's.
We're heading into the budget cycle, so it's.
We didn't have this inflation when we developed the budget. Good, good point. Council member, other council business? I have a couple of things. One, follow up from the last time, our last meeting, I introduced the idea to you for your consideration of having the council confirm the city manager's appointments of directors. So now that you've had a couple of weeks to kind of mull that around, I'd like to get some feedback on that, so I know whether I should get with the city attorney and city manager and work that further, or whether you're interested in doing that.
Okay, I'll start.
Okay.
Somebody else has taken a deep breath. I have given it a lot of thought, but I would still like to see, and I haven't reached out, so, but I would like to see if there's any other entities at all that does it this way, that has our form of government, a manager council form of government, not a strong mayor form of government. And I would like to see that. You know, I have a concern with us getting too involved. I understand the safeguards, and I don't, I don't know. We do have the ultimate say, if the city manager does something we don't like, and he appoints someone we don't like, and he doesn't change that, or she, then ultimately we can only rectify that by getting a new city manager. That's what we have in place now, and I think it works. So I'm a little concerned about it, but I want to, I want to definitely see if there's more. I don't want to get in, us to get into hearings like we see on TV with Supreme Court justices or something, and have, would we get into the public having to come in and comment? Does that mean we're going to have public looking at all the candidates and all that review? And I can, I can see that getting drawn out. So I don't know the answers yet, but that's my concerns.
Other council members?
I agree with James. I think seeing how we don't cross the line, and how other cities do it who have our same level of government is a good thing to look at. That doesn't mean that I'm ready for you to do it. It just means that somebody else show us their method, and the methodology, and what all it entailed, because I'm sure it's much more than just changing an ordinance here or there, or changing the charter, wherever that would change. I do like having more, you know, being able to weigh in, but I think some of what we're doing right now is a reaction to either what has happened in other jurisdictions, or even including some things that happened here. So I want to be careful that we don't overreact. But I am interested in hearing what other communities are doing.
Council member Abel.
Have you done any research into what other communities?
No, because I'm waiting to get some decision from this board, so that I can enlist the assistance of our staff, which I can't do.
Yeah, right.
Until you guys give me the nod.
Well, I support it. I would like for you to go down that pathway.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, too, would like to know what others are doing, not so much as, as a, what's our outer bounds that we could possibly go to, not that we copy what other people are doing, because I think we need to, we need to be our own, our own people, our own city. I don't know how deeply we want to get into the HR portion of it all. I believe in, I don't have a problem with advising consent on certain levels of directors, but I don't know how deep that that should go. Doesn't hurt to look into it. It doesn't hurt to look into it, but I, I'm a little apprehensive to go too deep into approving every level of director that would report to the city manager.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Well, no, but I could have gotten this two weeks ago. I didn't get anything more tonight than I got April 5. So I do have your consent to use our staff to go further.
We have my consent, too, to use our staff, so if that's what you're asking for.
Okay. Well, that's, that's what I, I wish I'd asked that question on April 5, because we've lost two weeks and gotten nowhere.
Well, I think we were all, felt the same way two weeks ago as we do today, so you're right, maybe you just didn't ask a strong enough question.
Okay. All right. Well, I will look and see what other cities do, but I, I mean, I don't have a list of cities, but I do know that other cities do this. So I will look into that and give you some more details at the next meeting. The next item, and I was going to introduce this one after closing that one out, so getting a long list of open stuff now. The next item I wanted to bring up to you is, I think, after talking to some of our community development staff and our city manager, that it is worthy of our time to review the sections of our ordinance that, well, there may be more than one, but the one section I'm thinking of specifically deals with the ratio of outdoor seating at restaurants. And we've had, I had a meeting with the city manager, some of our staff, and said, you know, when's the last time this was done? How do we compare to other jurisdictions? And we are, in my opinion, after looking at this, we are stale. We are out of date, and I don't know, we're not, need to throw the whole thing out, but I think it's time that we look at this to remain competitive with Tampa, Hillsborough, Pasco, Wesley Chapel, those areas. So I'm asking for your blessing for us to.
Absolutely.
To move forward on that, to bring something back before the council.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. And the last item I have, and this one, this one, the Vice Mayor asked me to do, and this is a great idea, I just need to get some control over this. The school support committee would like to, now that COVID's kind of opened up and stuff, would like to return to the idea of having the school principals that we support come back before the council, like we used to do, and they make periodic presentations. There's two things that I want to try to get a handle on here, though, so we don't have chaos, which is what I'm afraid we're headed for. I'd like to work with the city manager and the city clerk to figure out how to do this in an orderly fashion, because the way we're doing it now is a little haphazard, and like the school support committee liaison to this school, remember, they can't talk to each other either, or they're sunshine board, too. So they're going to their school and saying, could you come as the principal to April 19th? But I don't know that this person's also gone to this principal and said, April 19th's a good day for you, too, and maybe you, too. And then we get a night with a long agenda, and we have three principals show up, none of them because they've been asked by different individuals. So the other thing I'd like to try to avoid is nights where we have a very heavy agenda, and we have three principals. Like to try to, you know, is this something we can schedule according to the agendas? So, Vice Mayor, this is mostly geared toward you, but I'd like your permission to kind of figure out with the city clerk and the city manager, what's the way to get our arms around this so that we can coordinate, and is that?
Well, I mean, this is something that the school support committee can take care of for you.
Well, they can't, though. They can't talk to each other.
They can talk in session.
They can talk in session.
They can talk in session. I mean, it's not, not in a vacuum. I mean, if everybody, you know, we can, we can allocate out, okay, your schools here, this, you know, it's scheduled out through the summer, and it's early into next school year. But if we have criteria that, okay, no more than two, no more than one or two, and move forward with it, we can, we can do that, working with the, with the city clerk's office. That, there'll be a lot easier for them to talk to their liaison, I mean, liaison to talk to the principal.
And how will they know how hefty the agenda is? I'm coming.
Okay, gotcha.
City clerk? I mean, beyond that, I don't know. It's, they're.
But now, all these city councils, all those school support committee volunteers are now all pinging the city clerk's office, which is already causing a problem. That's, that's the problem I'm trying to solve. If that's the way, we'll do it. We'll do it.
Well, I mean, I don't care. I mean, if you want to spend the time talking to the schools, that's up to you. I mean, but that's, I wasn't aware that it was creating an issue at this point. So first, I'm hearing that there's a problem with that.
Okay. Council member Chambers?
I was just saying, would it be appropriate to use one of our four quarterly town hall meetings to have the schools come in, and have a school night where the public can come in? Just a suggestion.
Yeah, it's not quite the same, nor is it council.
No?
Yeah, it's not the same.
Okay. I tried.
Well, thank you.
I'll leave it alone.
I want to, I'm sorry, you're not finished? Go ahead.
Well, the mayor asked, and I kind of support the mayor if, because somebody has to be a clearinghouse of this to try to arrange it, so I support what you're saying. I don't know what you're asking for.
But you've got a lot, you've got other things to do also, besides.
I wasn't putting me in charge of this.
Well, I said what the mayor wanted to do, which is have her.
I'm just trying to put some order on this. We'll just do it this way, and.
No, that's fine. I mean, I don't have a problem with it. We can do it that way. I don't really care.
I want to know, who exactly sets up the agenda? So let's, let's start with this. Let's, okay.
Two and a half hours in.
Okay, all right. Let's start with this. If we know that we want in the next three months for the schools to come and visit us, and we have, I don't know, nine schools, then we should be able to say, as we're setting up the agenda, is there a way to put the schools here, and here, and here? I mean, is it, is it not that doable?
It is. What I'm trying to get to, but.
I hear you. I hear you. I do. I'm asking, I mean, if the person who sets up the agendas, which is the city manager's office, can't he say, I'm going to reserve space the first Tuesday of the month for the next three months to get the schools in?
Well, I can certainly talk to the interim city manager about this, but the mayor's point is we'll take it. And I think what you do is you establish a calendar. There's going to be X number of spots on the calendar, and that, those people will coordinate with the city manager. The city manager sets the agenda. The directors go to him with things. He or she will move and try, if, and I've seen it happen, too, Mr. Mayor. So if you're seeing two or three of them in front of you, and that's happened before, it's because somehow it got through the city manager. The city manager is the, is the stopping place, or the approval place for your agenda. They, he sets, or she will set that agenda for you. So creating some type of a calendar where they don't have to talk to each other, and they can come into the city manager's office, and then through that connectivity, they can be put on the agenda in the appropriate spacing, so you're not overly burdened on a heavy night. I think that's easily doable, and I can talk to Steve about it.
Okay. Other council business?
I just have one comment about that. I want to make sure that the schools who we have before us are the ones that the school support committee supports. It's not some other neighboring school in the area that comes and gives us a 15-minute presentation on their wonderful school, when they're not one of our supported schools. That's the list I want us to draw from. That's just a statement. You can take it or leave it, however you see what I'm saying.
Okay. Is there other council business? New business, board reports?
I do. Sorry.
Council member Chambers?
Thank you. You know, at the last council meeting, I talked about Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, and we had the proclamation. Thank you. They displayed it the next day. It was, that Tuesday was the first day of a two-day resiliency conference. It had over a couple hundred people attending from all over the United States. And on Wednesday, they displayed our proclamation. But they also had two panels that day on Wednesday, and I attended, and one was a mayor's panel of local cities, not us, but other, other cities, about what they're doing for resiliency, and also, a couple different counties had, there was a county panel. And what we heard and saw from our engineer, the nice video, which is the second video we've had now of the flooding that's out there, is one of the things we heard again was our 100-year floods are coming about every 20 years, and the rainfalls will be worse, and our storm events will be worse. And that was very clear in this thing, and also what some of the cities and counties are doing. They're all going to, they're trying real hard to do electric vehicles, they're putting solar on their city buildings, all the things we talked to in our gold-setting session. So that's what I learned in that conference. And there's also a link to it, so for staff, I'll be sending that link out, I guess, to the city clerk or somebody, so if our engineering staff and public work staff want to look at a lot of the good stuff that was presented, that's my report.
Good. Thank you, council member. Other new business or board reports? City managers' report.
Only one item to bring before you, council, and that is a change in your calendars for the upcoming May 17th Community Redevelopment Agency meeting that will start now at 5:30 instead of 5 o'clock. That to allow all of you to participate in the mayor four-day pizza, I think it is. Yes, pizza. That would be the only thing I have to report, sir.
Thank you. City attorney?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else to come before the council? Anybody? We're adjourned.